Ready to go? Okay. I would like to call together the Monday, I'm sorry, the Wednesday, October 20th meeting of the Manona City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Thomas?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Kerr?
Here.
Alder Groupie?
Here.
Alder Goford?
Here.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here.
Alder, I'm sorry, Alder Moore?
Here.
Thank you, I forgot your remote.
I'd rather be there in person, but I'm just exercising precaution.
We appreciate that. All rise with the allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, this is a special meeting of the council. We have no appearances, we're meeting for one purpose only. Consideration of premise extension application for 2021, 2022, Class B liquor and Class B fermented malt beverage licenses for Walmart Stores East LP, doing business as Walmart number 3857, 2151 Royal Avenue, Manona, Wisconsin 53713. This is put forth by the License Review Committee and it is start for immediate approval.
I'll move to suspend the rules and take this out of order.
Check it.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Check it.
Doug, did you want to address this, or Joan, whichever?
If I can take a crack at it, yeah. Basically Walmart has applied, they want to start doing the online sale of alcohol along with groceries, like Pick 'n Save has been doing for about four years. So this would be, and they presented at the committee, their, all of their procedures, they go through to make sure, we're supposed to check at the point of sale for an ID and so forth. Nate Reynolds was there, he was supportive of the application. We did add a condition that they had to provide video surveillance of the area in a manner acceptable to the Manona Police Department.
Any questions?
I'm just curious, sorry.
Groupie.
We got it. I'm just curious about the number of remaining liquor licenses that we have after this one is applied?
So this isn't a new, this isn't a new one?
It's not a specific, okay.
This is extending their existing premises, because the premise right now just is the interior of the building and this would be, for the time being at least, would be in the parking garage.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. And can you remind the council slash the public, if problems are to arise with this process, what would then happen as far as license review, either revoking the license, or what would the process be for that?
Right, so if there were a formal complaint, then that would be for either a revocation or a suspension. They, they would, Walmart would then have a right to a due process hearing in front of the License Review Committee. And then the council actually makes the final decision on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Alder Moore?
I'm wondering if we are, have required a surveillance camera in, for Metro Mart or other establishments that might be selling, if there's another establishment that's selling liquor in this manner?
So we've, you know, I can't remember if we required that Pick 'n Save or not, I think we did. It's become fairly routine for any of the outdoor areas that we required video surveillance of the premises. And I believe when, the last time we granted the new liquor licenses, we also required that.
And Pick 'n Save is the only other business that is doing best, correct?
Right, they're the only other ones doing online sales. And actually, sales don't occur online, they don't occur until the actual point of sale.
Any other questions? Alder Thomas?
How do they assure that someone's old enough to buy the alcohol?
They have to check their ID at the time of purchase.
If they order online, how do you do that? I mean, I ordered stuff from my mother in Florida from Walmart.
Right. But you don't, so for the, it's not actually processed until you get there, you have to go pick it up, it's not delivered. And at that time, that's when the actual sale of the alcohol occurs and you have, they have to, by their own procedures, they're supposed to present a photo ID.
Okay, so when someone picks it up, they check the ID?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, if there are no other questions, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you. We will reconvene in eight minutes.
Yeah, it actually goes into the base. Otherwise, it would have been reduced in the base. So that's the reason why that is. Otherwise, you can see it's 225 minus 254,000 would have been what our increase would have been. So that was huge. Even with that, we ran into, we did receive this expenditure restraint money this year. I just handed out a spreadsheet that shows for next year how to qualify for it. But that added in 127,000. So even with that change, 225,000 and add 127,000 for expenditure restraint, we still keep our services the same, the staffing levels the same, we're able to make that within $10,000. So if you qualify, though, you don't qualify for expenditure restraint for next year, you lose 127,000. So we are, we want to keep that. We're still always qualifying for the expenditure restraint. We did send it, I did put out a piece of paper, another sheet on here, that shows that expenditure restraint, this is from the state, and this shows how you qualify for it. We have to keep our expenditure restraints down to 3.2%. If we do not do that, which we currently are underneath that, we lose 127,000.
Did you say we are?
We're currently underneath that amount. And when we kind of get to the revenues, I'll explain how we're underneath that. So we are currently at underneath that, we were at 2.8%. So it is based, this, the expenditure restraint is based, if you look at, if you're working at the worksheet, it's based on your net new construction, too. That's one of the big drivers of that. So there's two big drivers, net new construction. So if we had net new construction, our number would have been, you know, using the formula, would have been 0.2%, we'd have been able to increase our expenditures. But the other factor in, you add in the CPI, Consumer Price Index, this year, the highest it's been for a while is at 3%. So you add in our net new construction factor, and the CPI, we get a 3.2. So each year that changes, you know, next year CPI will be different, and next year, net new construction number will be different. We have qualified for this probably 10, 12 years ago. It's been a long time since we qualified for it. At that time, we were only receiving about $20,000, 10, it was 15 to 20. I believe it was Mayor Miller at the time decided, you know, it wasn't worth it because you were, to qualify at the time, we'd have to cut staff at the same time. So, you know, we did some analysis, worked with the mayor at the time, and we decided it wasn't the time, was not worth it at the time. The cost benefits at the time is not. But now, we need to qualify for it. We received 127,000. Some for the future, we're always going to have to kind of monitor that. Otherwise, we had to cut 127,000 dollars to find a way to absorb that cost. So that's some big things on the threshold. So the total property tax did increase 624,000, or 7.4, 7, 7.4% increase. Total tax, property tax levy is now of 9,025,240. As we talked about, the law was 254,017. We own that by 244. So the amount that we budgeted, it was subject to the levy, was 244,258. So we are actually under levy right now by 9,759. We would not lose it if we don't use it. We are currently under that amount by 9,700. Debt service is exempt. Debt service levy did increase, 379,000. Over 207,000 of that is related to the interest payment for San Damiani purchase. So that's what that money increases for. Put the next page. So the tax rate is 6.57, it's up 13 cents from last year, or 2%. Average increase is $215. Average assessed counts. Full expenditures did go up. This is very, this is a misleading one. And it must have, that's not the right one because there was something else I put in here. So the total expenditures went up 3,431,000. But over 2 million of that is, so if you're looking at debt service, we're paying for, paying $2 million. We're taking the money we get from Dane County right away, and we're paying that right away. So we have to show it as an expenditure. And that's what's really misleading because we're not really increasing our expenditures by 3,431,000. So it's a one-time, you know, debt payment of $2 million for that. So that's why it's misleading, you talk about that, because next year, that $2 million would not be in that. So you'll see a decrease of that $2 million when you look at the expenditures. Our total revenues did increase by about 84,000 compared to last year. So main things, we did maintain current services, did not rest to go 2.5% weight increase. And there was some minor cycles you adjust with your public health next week. Police and fire were increased to their contract for the union contracts. This is the last year of their union contract, so 2023, we had to negotiate, negotiate that contract in '22. W R's Wisconsin retirement rates are at 6.5%. Health insurance premiums, 5.5%. Yeah, so Wisconsin retirement down 225 from last year, health insurance is 4.7%. That thing has been increased 378,000 from last year. And we are using, we're using, the projected fund balance is 195,290,000, 22%. Transportation aid increased by 3,300. This one is unique, this is based on what you spend on your highways. So if you have more road constructions or less, it's in the formula. So we had been dropping for years, now we're moving, it's stabilized, which is good. Personal property tax by about 30,000. So this was basically, we had to close the tip, tip two a couple of years ago. So this is, the state would give the money to the tip two, which now is actually for the general fund now, so that is our portion. So that increased because they closed, closed, increased 30,000. The expenditure restraint, we talked about, we did decrease the court fines by 16,000. Interest income, we did decrease. We did increase, you can reckon pool, the fees did increase. So when we get to that, the more, we talk about it next week. We did balance it with not much of an increase, you know, see why, because we did increase a lot of the fees. And we did propose to use 125,000 of fund balance. So we're still with our fund balance policy of 15 to 20%. We didn't go higher than 125,000 because if we looked at the higher number, it was over the expenditure restraint number. And that's why, playing with math, we got 125,000. So we did use other fund balance, 2,250,000 in debt service fund. That is related to the Dane County money, and we did have some money in the fund balance for debt service, too. So basically, we do these borrowings, we have these premiums. So these premiums that we get, we're supposed to use that money to offset your first payment. So it's based about 250,000 in premiums, is part of the 2 million. So that's in there, too, part of that service. We did use some money for transit, $10,000. Here's some graphs. I don't know if you can see them as well, but this is just kind of, shows all the expenditures by different departments. There's different areas you can see. The big ones, the police department, police safeties, the library, and it's part of the community center, third one to the end. And here's the revenues by each department. There are only a couple of departments that allow you to receive revenues. The police department, that's court fines, or immigrant that we receive, fire and U S, ambulance fees, or there's actually the state A2 that's for our department. And then you can see the park, the community center. And there is a largest increase, almost 800,000 is from fees with that. So then, if you break it down, expenditures, net of revenues, essentially, you don't, you typically don't get a lot, but the money that we spread, your largest, state fire and U S, and public works, and the library. The one, just want to take a look at, as you saw before, a couple graphs of, for expenditures, for the park, the community center, the one, the higher ones. And if you subtract out their revenues, they are actually on the lower ones. So something we talk about when Jay comes in here, I'm sure he'll reference things like that. So just, this is actually, you know, accurate numbers he's looking at. So there is, you know, based on estimated property tax split, 55% is a cylinder strain. Counties 12%, and the city is about 26% in M A T C. So there are some challenges ahead, you know, the expenditure restraint program. We need to keep that under the 3.2. Transportation needs, this year, we're stabilized, but that in the past has been fluctuating up and down. Health and care, healthcare costs, you know, we're 5.57 this year. You know, last year, we were about 3.7, and one year, year before, they had like 8%. So it has been fluctuating every year, but that's, you know, we're basically paying a little over a million dollars in health, health insurance. So if you can see, you know, 8% is $80,000 right there, increase. So just perspective, you may see the percentage. Net new construction, again, that's going to be huge. So, you know, these new developments that are coming in, you know, all really depends when they hit, hit the grounds, you know, shovels in the ground, because value does not get added basically to the projects completed. So next year, we will, the whole current project, last phase, will be in there. So I'm assuming that's going to put us over 1%. Because that's 24 million. You know, you're projecting about $24 million or so in that. So just basically doing the math, what our current equated value is, puts us over 1% for that. But after that, we don't have any projects that are shoveled in the ground. And there's a lot that we talked about, you know, planning and things like that. But, you know, until they're shoved in the ground, that's something to worry about with that, and then your construction number. Because as you can see, there was no projects for this year. We would have been at, you know, point 3.3. So that is a big challenge. Sewer rates, we're now about 7%. We estimate it. That's usually just a pasture that we get from Madison Metro Sewers District. They haven't given us a rate yet. So it's usually estimated around there. Stormwater might have been at 3% just kind of based on the increase for debt service, and no longer made increase. Any questions or comments?
So Mark, remind me, how much fund balance are we using to offset the levy?
General fund, 125,000, and the debt service, you have 2,250,000.
So what are we going to do? How are we going to cover that next year?
So that 125,000 is actually, it's basically transferred to debt service to pay off debt. So, you know, the debt service would increase a little bit next year if we fill that amount.
We're not using any fund balance to cover the operation?
No, we're not using it because otherwise, you're in a hole. So we're not using a fund balance to cover it.
Thank you.
Yeah, on the expenditure restraint program, where it's, the total growth limit is 3.2%. So what, we're, you know, out of all these numbers, which, what is, what do they consider your total budget?
Yeah, so that's a, it's a neat one. I don't have that actually. So what they end up doing, it's really neat. So they take the general fund expenditures, you add in the property tax levy for other, every other fund. So you add up, and separate sheets, which are there. So you basically, you add up the general fund expenditures, you add up the expenditures for U N S, or not the expenditures, the property tax. So it's really weird. So you take the expenditures, and you go to say page four, you look at the levy number for the library, and you get 653,067. Community center levy number is 595. Ambulance and so on. Now, these levy, reach different funds, that's been added in there. So it's a, it's a formula you have to fill out, and that's how you run it.
So even though the levy is going to go up more than 3.2%, if the total budget growth is less than 3.2, we would be eligible?
Yes.
For next year, for '23?
Yeah, so you basically are qualifying this year for '23.
Right. So if we did that, we would still get the 127,000 or something like that?
Yeah, it's a formula they give, but yeah, it's based on.
Anyone else? Questions for Mark?
Ma'am?
Alderman?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, I don't recall hearing an update lately as it relates to the, I don't know, was it somewhere between 800,000 and a million dollars to the feds that we had to spend before 2025, and we weren't sure what it could be spent on?
We will let the administrative answer that.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I am working on an analysis of the IRS rules in terms of what are eligible expenses. The problem is that I think some communities take a more expansive definition of what that ARPA money is eligible for than perhaps I think we would be comfortable with. So right now, IRS has interim guidelines. They'll be coming out with final guidelines probably, hopefully before the end of the year. So we'll have a conversation as a body about how those funds can be spent and what some options are. There are a couple of important, but what I'd call smaller ticket items that I think staff would recommend we use the funds for, and we'll talk about this at some point in the near future. But for example, updating our public safety policies for both fire and police is one example. That's something that would be eligible for ARPA money. It's to the tune of about $70,000. That's something that right now, outside this budget, we don't have money set aside for that. But it would be an ARPA type of expense. There are some other things like that. But the vast bulk of that would still remain available for the council to distribute as they see fit. And I guess my caution and my recommendation at this moment is, there isn't necessarily a need for us to spend that money right now, particularly in the absence of final guidelines from the IRS. So it makes sense for us, as projects come up, to evaluate them and determine if it makes sense to use the ARPA money and then use it that way, rather than committing our first batch of money, which is about $400,000 now, when we, when there might be some needs that are unforeseen that come up next year and years beyond, up until '24.
Would you say that, Brian, would you say that the guidelines to date are expenditures that would be along the lines of operating as opposed to capital?
No. Well, I guess it comes down to your, your specific municipalities' interpretation of the IRS guidelines. And I say it that way because when you make an expenditure under ARPA, you, there is a chance you may be audited. So if you spend it on something that ends up not being eligible, you will be audited, and you would likely have to pay that money back to the IRS. So that's, that's why I think myself and other administrators like me, in some situations, are urgent caution in spending these monies to weave a fuller understanding of what the money can be spent on. That being said, one thing that is pretty clear from the IRS guidelines is that infrastructure-related projects, but specifically water and sewer utilities, so not roadways, can't use ARPA money for roads. But the infrastructure that's underneath the roadways is ARPA-eligible projects. And as of right now, in our capital budget, there's not necessarily a project that makes sense to use ARPA money for. But if, as we look ahead in future capital projects, where there is a stormwater or a water infrastructure component to a capital project that makes sense to use ARPA, we would absolutely recommend that the council give that some consideration. But more operational budget items, again, that's really tough because this is one-time money. And if we spend this one-time money on something that we want to continue to do for years going down the road, then we are putting ourselves in a hole. So that's why, as of now, I have not advocated that we use it for operating expenses yet, until we make a good case for it.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the update.
Just one, one quick thing on that. So it is, we did receive 400,000. It is separated into its own separate fund. So, you know, the auditors or anybody, if you look at the financials, you'll see where it's at, we have inspected a lot of that. So that is being tracked. It goes into the ARPA fund balance, wouldn't go into our general stock.
Correct. Yeah, it's a separate segregated fund. And just one more item on ARPA. One other component of the ARPA money is that city municipalities can use ARPA money to make up a gap in lost revenue, all-inclusive in their community. So round numbers, let's say, in 2020, we had a net loss of $100,000 in revenue because of COVID. We can apply, again, round numbers, that $100,000 of ARPA funding to fill that gap. But that money then has to go back through those areas or departments that had a loss. It cannot go, we cannot just transit it into the designated fund balance, as an example. You cannot park ARPA money there in your quote-unquote sinking fund or savings account. You have to use it to cover a hole that you experienced in 2020. Once that money comes back through that, that department of those areas where you have a loss, and goes back into your general fund, then you can use that portion of ARPA money to spend on anything that you want, anything municipal-related. So like, we're in the process now of doing our analysis with, with a formula from IRS to see what, if any, loss we would have had. And if we do have a loss like that, then we'll bring to the council some suggestions on how we could use the money that came from that gap, as an example. And that's separate from, like, the infrastructure projects and other things that I just spoke about.
Sorry, Brian, one more thing since I assume that there may be some citizens that would watch this recording at some point, or assume on YouTube. Could you just say what that money is again for people who might not understand?
Yep.
What the acronym is that you're using?
Absolutely. So.
And where that money is coming from?
Yeah, ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act money. That is money that comes from the federal government as a result of one of the bills that they've passed at the end of last year to assist states, municipalities, other entities in kind of the economic impacts of COVID. Each state, county, municipality had a certain allocation of federal money that comes to them dependent upon a formula and the population of that particular community. Specifically, our, our allocation, I believe, was just a little under $850,000. That comes in two separate chunks of money. The first chunk arrived, you know, middle part of this year, and like Mark said, is just kind of around $420,000. The second chunk of money won't come until next year. And again, that money, until the council decides how they'd like to allocate it, will sit in a separate segregated fund for accounting purposes.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Questions for Mark? All right. Okay, well, thank you, Mark. I think we'll move on to the first already covered. Dan is here to discuss public works, utilities, buildings, and solid waste. And this starts on page 76, I think, in your book.
So I passed out my budget highlight sheet to you all before the debate tonight. This covers a summary of changes, like $500 or more or less, increase or decrease for the various budgets that are in the public works operating budget. I did not cover anything that's based on a formula-based cost or personnel costs that are determined by the finance director or the administration. So pretty much what we see in here for me will be operations and maintenance related. That said, we'll start with the general buildings and grounds, which is the city hall facility budget, water, sewer, utility.
Page 51.
51.
Increases by $1,600. And that is based on the, I mean, the expected increases for water, water through utility budgets. Stormwater utility increases by 1,900, and that's based on the needs in the stormwater utility. The rain garden and landscaping maintenance, we are decreasing that by 2,800, and that's to help meet the budget restrictions.
The repair and maintenance services at City Hall increases by 7,300. And that's to account for needed maintenance and repairs of the city hall structure. And the repair and maintenance supply account decreases by 1,500 based on need. If there's anything in the budget that I'm not covering and you have questions about in the narrative, please, please ask, and I'll do my best to answer your questions. Are there any questions for the general buildings and plant budget?
I do, we probably could change the, sorry, this is late. I was just going through your stormwater utility for the secow. It looks like somebody, there was a miscode for something that was actually a large number. So that's why it looks like the revenues carry the expenditure. So really, it's probably closer to the 400.
I'm going to drop that back down?
I mean, I don't know if we can do a technical change.
We can, we can propose that for the November 1 meeting.
Yeah, that was just, you know, there was a miscode in there.
What figure would you go with, Mark?
It's going to be right around 400 again.
400, okay.
Digging into it.
Okay. Any other questions for that budget? Okay. Moving on, the next one would be the public works budget. Mark, do you have a page for that?
Starts on page 76.
I believe the first one in the public works budget would be the administration or engineering budget. Not a whole lot happening there with that budget. The outside services were decreasing by $570. And again, that's to help meet the budget restrictions. The next budget would be the highway administration. We don't have any major changes to that account or to that budget. The next budget would be the shop machinery and buildings account. We are looking at increasing the telephone expense there by 1,000, and that's based on need. And the repair and maintenance supply increases by 2,000, and that's based on needs of the facility, similar to the city hall structure. That line item is for the upkeep of the public works garage.
Dan?
Yes?
When you say the telephone budget is going up by $1,000 based on need, what does that mean?
That is based, formula, Mark. I think you fill that one in, the telephone.
Telephone is basically their telephone services. They have a lot of different iPads and phones they have.
Cell phone, data plans.
Data plans and things like that. I think that's what a lot of it's for. And it's also like their hard lines they have for the fax machines and all the types of things that, internet stuff they need for that building, because that's the actual public works garage.
I mean, that's a big increase.
We're.
I think it's a big increase because we're under budget in that account. So if you kind of look at, you know, 2020 was, you know, 4,700, and this year, it's probably around 4,500, it's probably closer to 4,700. So I think it's more reading budgeted number correctly in the past.
Thank you.
Plus, it's pretty much all technology-based. Everybody's got a cell phone. The, we have this split in many utilities as well, all of our costs. I guess that, you know, we've transitioned away from the handheld radios to, to cell phones as an easier way to get in touch with staff, so.
I'm curious if we do any kind of overall review of our telecommunications or plans or service plans so that we could maybe look for some streamlining and savings? Is that something that the city does? Or do we not do any kind of audits in turn? Is that something that the city does, or do we not do any kind of audits internally?
I think PB, Sarah and PB has reviewed landlines in the past as far as the cell phone accounts. Those go to the finance director. And as far as the cell phones in my department, I probably review the matrix about twice a year. We have gotten rid of, I think, about three lines in the past year. So we go through and remove any line that's not being used, any hotspots, things like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, basically, kind of go through our phone list a couple times a year to make sure that people who have it in hotspots are being utilized and things like that. We do it, we do have, they, a couple years, I mean, years ago, they had, a firm came in here. They came in, they took it, they looked at all our data and figured that stuff out and take a look at that. And they did, probably like four or five years ago, they did do that. So I don't know if we're working right now with AT&amp;T, so maybe we talked about them a month or so ago, maybe they're talking about doing another quick look at it again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the street maintenance and construction. The median and terrace maintenance, we decreased that in 2021 by $1,500 to help meet the budget restrictions for this year. For 2022, we're asking to increase that by 2,400 to help meet the needed maintenance and upkeep requirements. A good portion of that account goes to the Barnes contracted work for the, I think there's nine block walls at the intersections on Manona Drive that we ask for their assistance in the spring. We've learned in the past that if our staff does it, there are times that we don't get to them until about August, so they help give us a boost in keeping those things looking good with flowers and things like that, mulch. Street sweeping disposal, that is increased by $2,680, and that's to account for the needed disposal of street sweepings. This was a new line for the 2021 budget, so the number that we had in there for this year was an estimate based on new requirements of the MS4 permit. So we have a good idea of what that cost is this year prorated, expected prorate expense for next year, so that increases. And that cost is also shared in the stormwater utility. It's a half-half or 50-50 split. Street equipment and repair, we are increasing that by 1,000, and that's to help account for needed equipment maintenance of the DPW fleet. The next one is a big one. It's the fuels and additives account. We're increasing that by $13,000, and that's to account for increases in the forecasted fuel pricing for 2022. We are expecting, hopefully prices come back down. The energy outlook forecast had $2.73 a gallon for gas and $3.07 a gallon for diesel. They are, they're rising or rose quite a bit from the 2021 prices. The street supply account increases by 3,200, and that's based on need. And the snow and ice supply, we're increasing that by 2,900 based on the current salt inventory. And the purchase allocation planned for 2022. This also accounts for the annual price increase for salt that we purchased in DOT. Is there any questions for that budget?
Alderwood?
Do we get a discount on the gas prices that we pay if we go to...
Yes. We purchase fuel from both Landmark, which is behind Menards, and QuickTrip. And we get quantity discounts at the pump.
Like 5% or do you know how much to...
I believe the QuickTrip one is 5 cents a gallon off the price, and I think Landmark is right around 5 cents as well. So we do, and when we're looking at DPW fuel, just for DPW, we purchase about 3,400 gallons in gas and about 8,200 gallons in diesel, so over the course of the year, that adds up to quite a bit, so.
What was the diesel number again? Sorry, Dan.
As far as gallons?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for that budget?
Just so you know, I feel like it is non-personnel, we don't want 22%. If you look at the next page, you talk about that's where the decrease is coming, the set sum is increasing. So he looks at his budget as a whole, not...
Right. For general fund. Yeah. Okay. Moving on to the road-related and facilities budget.
Dan?
Yes.
Sorry, I have my hand up, but I know it's hard to see me. So I had a question about the gas and the, again, which is, and I know I've raised this before, but have we considered going to biodiesel as Madison has? I know at one time we talked about it, and at the time, our contract with Landmark or some other things made it less feasible, but as I've reported, I know Mahanta's had really good luck with the biodiesel, both in terms of extending the wear and tear on the equipment and reducing the carbon.
We did, the administrator and I, and I think Brad, we went and met with the city of Madison. I can't remember if that was late 2019 or early 2020 before COVID. And so we had, we had a great discussion with the Madison people for a couple of hours, and I, it's, I think if, looking into it is on hold right now. But I think logistics of getting the fuel to us was a big concern as far as switching to biodiesel. Either our staff would have to travel to Madison to top off, or we'd have to put some supply tanks in Manona. So those are the things that we'd have to figure out as far as the efficiencies of getting that fuel. But I think it's sitting idle right now as far as biodiesel.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we did...
So that's not something that Landmark could bring on board?
I don't believe so. I think from what I've gathered from Landmark, I think their nearest depot is in Portage.
Okay.
I don't, don't take me firm on that. It's been a while since I looked at my notes on that.
Okay.
Yeah, and we did, we did talk with the city of Madison about potentially purchasing into their existing inventory. Same challenge there in that there isn't a storage facility nearby Manona that would make sense. I think the closest one was boy over by the Ahara Hills Golf Course, I think was the closest one. There was some possibility, depending on what happens long-term with the Manona Golf Course, I think there's a smaller tank that's there, but they weren't sure that they were ready to make that investment in upsizing that tank so that we could then buy into it. So I'd say we are interested. I think there's some logistical challenges that we need Madison to make some moves in order for it to make sense for us financially.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And just to add to that, I think it was 2013 when we removed our underground fuel tanks at the shop. And I believe that we took, our liability insurance was quite high at that time, and once we removed the fuel tanks, I believe we got a big break on that liability insurance. So if at all possible, if we can avoid adding fuel tanks, that would be, that would be good for us. Okay. Any additional questions?
I was just curious about our salt inventory. Did we have anything left over from last year?
There's about 100 tons left over. We can store about 200 tons in our shed. We purchase about, I think it's 460 tons, I'd have to look at my narrative, a year, or that's the goal, to have that, whether it's in inventory or purchase. And we do a pretty good job of not really going over that. So whatever our balance is, we put in our expected purchase, and it's based on that. The state does an RFP every year, so that price changes every year.
Do you foresee any challenges in getting salt this year, or is that, has that been an issue?
The only time that we possibly or could expect to see challenges is if we have an abnormal winter where we get the snow events or the ice events, like a nickel-and-dime kind of thing, where it's like every other day or every third day that we have to go out and salt, you know, minor salting or whatnot. But we avoid salting straight runs. We mainly target intersections, hills and curves. We're using a little more of the anti-icing, the liquid. That's a pre-wet for the roads before the storm gets here. But I think overall, we've done a pretty good job, and we've stayed within our budget for salt. I think there was, probably three years ago, we had to seek out like 60 extra tons or so. But for a community our size, we actually use very little salt compared to other communities. So I think we, we like to brag about that one.
Awesome. Yeah, it's good. Thanks.
Okay. Moving on, back to road-related facilities. The street lighting utilities, we're decreasing that by $17,000, and that's based on need and the budget restriction. This account covers streetlight and pole replacements as needed if lights are taken out. Mainly, what we've experienced in the past is Manona Drive lights. And knock on wood, we've had a good year as far as no lights being taken out. An average cost of replacing a light on Manona Drive is about $10,000. And as for labor, equipment, materials, everything totaled up. And I think it was 2019, I think there was three lights that we had hit that year on Manona Drive.
I have a question for Mark about that. Why aren't the streetlights capital items?
The streetlights are lighting.
Right. We don't have, if you...
We buy, like, we put poles in, like, say if you put a hole, like, stretch it in, then we capitalize on it. But these are just like...
So why, if we buy replacement streetlight, which costs $10,000, and under normal circumstances lasts more than five years, probably more than 10 years, why is that not a capital item?
Because there are years that we don't buy any lights. So we only, we only keep about one pole in inventory, and as soon as that pole goes out in the street, we buy another pole for inventory. I don't know how you would do a capital budget if you're not going to use it.
Well, we have fund balance, capital fund balance that we could use to buy it. I'm just trying to see if we can swipe it out from the operations into the capital if we could, because there, we're gonna hit some tough times in terms of the levy that we have. And so if there are things that we can move from operations to capital like that, I mean, that's what we did with the police cars. So I'm just, I just think that it's, that we ought to think about if there's a way that, I mean, if you look at the cost and the length of life, it's not repairing, it's replacing, it's buying new, it's like buying a new squad car. So I guess, Mark, I'd just like you to think about if there's a way we can reduce that. And we've always got money in the capital fund balance to buy one. That's, that's all I...
A lot of times, these are replacements too, if somebody hits an accident.
Right. If we can re, excuse me, if we can recover costs through restitution or insurance companies or the court, probably more often than not, we're successful with that, but there are times that we're not.
Right. So I just think that, that if you could think about a way to think outside of the box and do that, it might be good for the future.
Okay. Any other questions for the road-related facilities budget? Okay. Moving on to forestry. Mark is working on that.
Page 88.
In the forestry budget, the equipment, maintenance, and repair account increases by $1,000 to help account for the needed maintenance of the vehicles. And the next item would be the brush collection contract increase of 2,500. That's for the Barnes chipping contract. This is only half of the increase, the other half appears in the stormwater utility. That would be it for the forestry budget. Is there any questions for that one? Okay. Moving on, the next one would be solid waste disposal.
Just one second.
Yep.
Page 1. 151. All right, Mark, what, what page did you say again?
151.
Thank you.
So everything that you see on the summary sheet for this item is all contractual-based increases per the contract. Our curbside recycling collection is increased by $1,187. The curbside garbage collection cost increases by $2,700. Our tipping fee for solid waste disposal goes up by $5,428. And the recycling processing fee increases by $1,980. As of right now, waste management has taken over that contract from advanced disposal, and our contract runs through December of 2023. So we have two more years under that, under that contract. Any questions for that one? Moving on to the stormwater utility budget.
Page 1.
Page 154. The first one would be the outside services account increases by $550 based on need for outside help. The vehicle maintenance and repair account increases by $1,500. The fuels and additives increases by $1,115. Our adaptive management fee is decreasing by $5,300 based on recent storm modeling updates submitted to the adaptive management program. Our street sweeping disposal, this is the other half that we covered in the public works account, $2,680. That's for paying for disposal of the street sweepings. And the other half of the brush collection appears here, $2,500 increase for that. Any questions for the stormwater utility budget? Next budget would be the water utility.
Page 160.
The first item would be a one-time increase for 2022, maintenance of water treatment equipment. We're increasing that by $4,000. We're planning to replace one of our chemical feed pumps in 2022. The reservoir tower materials and repair account decreases by $9,850. That was a one-time increase for 2021 where we painted our floors this year in all three wells. We have planned dehumidifier replacements planned for the water utility in 2022. The last item here for water utility would be the fuels and additives, that increases by $794, and that's based on the forecasted pricing. Any questions for the water utility? Okay. Moving on to the sewer budget, the last budget for public works. The big one, the annual increase that we received from MMSD. I did plan for an 8% increase, and I believe the finance director, it does adjust it once we get word from MMSD what they approve. As of right now, we're increasing that charge by $80,404. And the other increase that we have for this account or this budget would be the fuels and additives, 795 increase for 2022. Any questions for that budget? Yes?
So that 8% increase, is that kind of what we've been seeing over the last several years? That's the property amount that we've been seeing, or is that projected as a larger figure because we know what they're doing in terms of infrastructure?
Usually between 6 and 8%. I don't know if that sounds right to you, Mark.
Yeah. Usually, the way that they tell us, they give us what their overall increase is, which is right around 8%. And a lot of times, like, two or three years ago, ours was like about 8%. Ours was, our mis判断 by itself was like 14 or 15%. In some other municipality, it was like 2%. So it really varies. Ours are usually on the higher side. And we had, we met with them probably, what, two months ago, talking about that. You know, we asked a lot of questions why, and they're explaining to us, but it's the I and I issue. They say that's a large issue with us. So it all depends, but usually we are, for some reason... So it all depends, but usually we are, we, for some reason, you know, they have their, when they do their analysis, we have the higher, higher rate increase than most people.
Plus what's built into that increase is their capital projects every year. And it's only going to get worse for them, which means it's going to get worse for us because the, the affluent restrictions that they have coming from the state are just getting tighter every year. So as far as the I and I problem, you know, we're working on that with our capital budget, doing lining projects. We have one happening this year, another one on the, planned for next year and continuing with that. So we're slowly tackling that.
Can I go back to, have a water, just a water utility? We lost a lot of water usage when Beckton Dickinson or whatever the name of it was left. We started catching up with the new apartment buildings in terms of water usage.
Oh, not as much as they did, but we are, we are catching up, yes. We're one of the larger ones, larger users now. It wasn't, Phoenix was a large one, the largest one, and they, I believe, they left too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no additional questions, I guess that would be it for me.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep, thank you.
I like this format that you give us, Dan, with these sheets. It makes it, I like this format when you give us these sheets because it makes it easy to understand without going through line by line.
Okay, thank you.
So it's very good, thank you.
Next up is the senior center, Diane. This is page 127, I think.
Well, this one's going to be short and sweet compared to public works. Did you guys get the page?
127.
Okay. So the senior center operating budget proposal is pretty much the 1% across the line. There isn't a lot of major changes here. I didn't do any major program changes, hoping that 2022 might look more normal. But when we don't hold bigger programs, we don't spend the money and we don't bring in the money. So in that sense, we're kind of cost neutral when programs don't happen. The only other line item on here that's a little unusual is that the RSVP program, which is the retired senior volunteer program, which is ride coordination, they actually decreased their budget slightly. So they rely on volunteers to drive seniors to locations. And that program with COVID just has not come back to life. The safety of senior volunteers and senior riders. They just started bringing that back this summer and then the Delta variant kind of pulled them, scaled them back again. So they're really thinking we might not be coordinating as many rides in 2022. So that's just a slight decrease for, for next year. The only other thing I like to remind council when we do the senior centers budget is about 25 of our, 25% of our budget goes for Newbridge. And it's the contracted senior services and the program development or home tour. And we don't treat them like personnel, like city staff, but a lot of it's their, their salaries. So, and Jim talks about this when he comes to our budget meetings. They really struggle because we're only increasing their contract by 1%. So then they can't give, you know, a lot of, they can't give an adequate raise to their case managers and the home tour coordinator. So they struggle often with staff turnover. Because they'll come on board, they'll find another job in this, you know, big city with opportunities where they get paid a little bit more and then they move on. So still a great service, a great deal for our city. But I'd just like to remind you guys that some of these line items that are contracted are actually people's salaries and benefits.
So, yeah, some questions?
Do they negotiate a contract with us or do we just kind of tell them what we're going to pay them?
Well, we, we follow what we're asked to do in our, in our budget. So when we were only allowed a 0% or a 1% budget, they.
But they don't decrease their services if we can't pay them? I mean, essentially they're just doing.
So what's, what happens is they would have a waitlist for seniors if they don't have the staffing to cover it.
Okay.
Yeah, but they don't, like decreasing the services, I, I don't think that's, you know, they wouldn't give us less case management or, you know, it's more of a, it's a full service that they, that they give.
I may just think about like when we have contracts with public works with our brush collection, they tell us what they want us to pay for the service that we expect. And so I guess I would expect the same from, from Newbridge if they want, they want, we want them to, you know, provide us a service, they should tell us what they want and.
And they, and they could do that, but we have a very small budget. So we work together like hand to hand and they know if they ask for more than in this tiny budget that we have, where do we cut? So when we do the city budget and its personnel, like for my salary and health benefits, it's just across the board. We're going to pay for our staff. But for these particular line items, they're just part of, it's just like office supplies or, or, you know, anything like that. We just, they fall under that 1% increase or 0% or whatever we're shooting for that year. So, yeah, if they wanted to ask for more, then I'm going to have to find somewhere to cut it in our budget.
Do you know if there are Manona residents, do they have a waiting list of Manona residents?
They have a small waiting list. The home tour program is really, anything that relies on volunteers, which is a lot of senior services, is struggling. Seniors won't go into homes or they just aren't volunteering. So there's, they're really needing a lot of volunteers. Now it's a little bit easier when it's leaf, you know, doing the, the leaves and the outdoor stuff. It's the inside stuff, like I need my, my floors cleaned and my bathroom cleaned because people are skittish about putting people in their homes. But, yeah, so there's, I think the waitlist got a little bit better when they had full staff, but now they're down again. So I think that's just part of everything else.
It's just lack of volunteers.
Yeah, for the home tour program. Now with case management, I think they also have a slight waitlist that may be due, just due to staffing because they're replacing staff often.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Alderwood.
All right, well, I'm sorry, Alder Moore and then Alderwood.
Yeah, I, I want to go back to Alder Kerr's question. Like Diane, I really appreciate the fact that you're so attentive to keeping your budget, under budget. And on the other hand, it does seem that service providers, if there's, if there's a need there, it would be helpful to know, you know, because we know that that service is really important for the seniors that use it. For our seniors. And so I guess I, I would say it would be important to know, A, what it is that they need and B, when, when in a sense, there appears to be sort of a complaint that we pay them a lot less than what they would get elsewhere, having some sense of the difference. Comparative data of, you know, the other places that they serve would be helpful for us.
Okay. Okay, I can try to find that out. You know, like I said, I think we always just try to work together. They, they negotiate, so Newbridge will contract with the city of Madison, Dane County and the city of Manona. And they have this same mantra for all of the places that, where they need to discuss their budget. So Dane County will only give so much. So, but yeah, so I can tell Jim, you know, the next time we do a proposal, bring, bring me what you need. I always just share with them when we get our directions. This is what we've been directed to do. And, you know, we all just try to pitch in as a team and make that happen. So we all are respectful that these are city, they're taxpayer dollars and trying to be respectful of that. But I can bring that up to Jim and just tell him, this is what he could propose, but this is what we really need to keep our, our case managers equal or comparable to others in our community. That's a good idea.
You know, Diane, I would say that every year you're told what to budget for, but we certainly always take into consideration departments that need increases that are more than the 1% or whatever. And they come and justify them to us and.
Yeah.
We often work out a way to give it to them. So don't feel like you can't ask for something just because of that. You know, I mean, we'd like you to stick with that. Right, it's not carte blanche or, I mean, obviously we'd like you to stick with that, but we certainly.
No, I just understand. That's great.
Please don't feel that you can't bring that up.
Right.
Alderwood?
That's a good point.
Yeah, I was just wondering, Diane, where, where do you see, where are you in terms of the recovery from COVID? And what services and what you're programming, you're offering and how many people are showing up?
You mean recovery as far as attendees?
Yeah, getting back to, you know, the full, full offerings and, and how many people are then coming to what we're offering.
Yeah, we're close. We're maybe 80%, some people are still nervous, but seniors have been desperate for socialization. It was a little transition in September, we went back to having like coffee. So remembering to put your face mask back on and, but they're used to it now. And groups differ. I mean, our senior choir is even meeting, they're singing with masks on just because they want to be there. So we're holding every program that we held pre-COVID, just not, maybe not 100% participation like what used to be, but we're close, way over 50, 50%, but not quite 100.
Okay.
Now winter, we'll see what happens in the winter, but fall is a good time.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Next is the planning department. I think Doug is with us virtually on page 94, this would be.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Thanks for your time this evening. So this again should be pretty, pretty short and sweet. I kept everything, the main items to be the same. Professional development, supplies, all those items to be consistent. Really hoping this year wasn't, wasn't great for conferences and things like that. Certainly for being able to travel and, and, you know, meet with my peers and things like that. But I kept all those the same in the hope that 2022 will see some improvements there. I'd be happy to answer any questions that may arise from the council.
Anyone, Alder Kerr?
If I remember correctly, we decreased your professional development last year. Are you putting that back up to where it needs to be? I thought that we decreased it because we didn't think you were going to be able to travel.
I think it actually held constant. I didn't spend it, but it did, some of the, you know, professional, the AICP, for example, those, those costs were still consistent, but 2,200, I believe is, is where it was for sort of, you know, and times from, from the past.
Okay.
Anyone else? I don't think so. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks very much.
Next is police and emergency communications. Turning on page 55.
Good evening. Won't be as chippy as your fire chief this evening. I have a little bit of, some allergy issues. But hi. Thank you for having me for my first budget season here at Manona PD, at Manona. It's great to be here. So as Mark mentioned, as our finance director mentioned, who's been a great help in getting through this process. Most of the increases that you'll see as it relates to the LE budget is going to be with respect to police salaries, the wages, et cetera. Are there any questions on that top half? And then I'll address some of the movement that was made for those other operating line items. Okay. Doing some switching around, so in alignment with some of our 2020 goals, which I think is important to highlight. I'll mention, and my team has heard this, you will hear it several times. I'm, I'm key on service leadership and teamwork. And, and evaluating sort of the goals for 2020 and looking at how that aligns with service leadership and teamwork. You'll see that I've highlighted those in our 2020 goals. I'll just quickly cursory touch on a couple of them. The increase of community engagement events. Currently, right now, it's funded for $500. We'll make that stretch, we'll make that work. It doesn't cost money to interact with people. However, it does cost money when you're hosting events and you need to rent a porter potty, for example, right? Which was the case for our exceptionally attended bike rodeo event. So these things do cost money. Adjusting our recruitment model. Why I bring that up there is because we just went to a job fair today at Madison College. We had one of our dispatchers and Lieutenant Weagle who attended on behalf of the police department looking to recruit potential dispatchers because we anticipate a vacancy early next year. Right now, the market is tougher to hire dispatchers than it is for sworn police officers. So we're out there early, we're getting the word out early. And so we attended Madison College today for that. But we're also thinking long term, short term, long term, as in next year, looking for potential vacancies to fill sworn positions due to retirements that we anticipate will be happening. Somewhat embarrassing news I can report is that we didn't have much to put on our table. Why I'm bringing that up is because that comes out of a line item in our operating budget for professional development, believe it or not, if you, if you weren't aware. And so we need to put stuff on our table, folks. We need to be attractive, not only the families, people that are there and their outgoing personalities. We need to compete with agencies like Middleton and Verona, the Dane County sheriffs, who have a fully wrapped squad car that they bring out promoting their agency. We are a top notch agency working for a top notch city. And we need to try to represent that when we attend these job fairs. And so when you look at what I did for our professional development budget, I tried to find some money within the other line items to shift around and move. You'll see a fragment of that shifted, $300 was increased to the 2022 budget. Thank you, Mayor, for putting that figure in. And where that funding came from is the reduction of the police equipment line item. And so we're going to do our best to save what we can so that we can put more money into recruitment, more money into professional development. That's that leadership, teamwork and service that I'm talking about here. And so those are the items that were shifted around to make that $300 increase. And I see Alder Thomas may have had her.
I just had a comment to say I would be happy to work with your staff because I know that we could raise support in your community to fund if, if it's events or if it's things at a table, these are the things that we could easily get support. So in addition to what you shuffled, I'll sit down with your staff and we can figure out how to raise you a couple $3,000 to get some of that stuff.
That is great. And obviously I've been out and about too. And so I'm not the best sort of door to door salesman fundraiser, Alder Thomas, but I do mention our needs and I do mention some of the things that I, I want to do for this police department and what I think the community deserves. And there have been folks who have mentioned, hey, you know, reach out if you need something or some creative ideas. So Alder Thomas, I think I will.
Walmart should be doing a lot for you guys and they will, I mean, we'll talk, we'll talk later, but.
Perfect. Thank you.
Alder Ruby?
Yeah, just a quick, so one of the line items, one of the programs in the public safety department that we discussed previously in different budget years to either decrease, increase, talk about whether or not it should persist, is the, like the fitness requirement benefits that, that different, you know, officers can achieve by meeting certain requirements for physical fitness. I just wanted to ask about the status of that and see if that would be a fund that potentially could be adjusted to facilitate some of this, you know, marketing that you're talking about needing additional funds for.
I, I walked into that program and I think it's an exceptional program. I think it's a great incentive, money can be a motivator for some, right? But there's a lot of peer pressure too, to be fit and that's physical fitness. I think it's, we take that from our professional development funding. And I think that with the numbers of folks that we see participate in that, that's, we're at an adequate number. However, looking ahead, you will hear me start to speak about wellness and wellness days and funding support for, you know, a, a visit with a contracted counselor, right? Where the city pays, as we support wellness and, and the health of our officers, the city would pay for a one time, one, one time a year, one hour session as the city of Madison does and other municipalities do. And the balance of your time would be spent to do any kind of wellness activity that's, that's healthy for you that day. And so you might see me, Alder Ruby, mention that in future line items or future budgets. But it's something that we need to really explore and see how that fits best with Manona. fits best with Manona, Manona PD.
I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Okay. Continue or? No questions, it looks like.
Okay. Well, that's sort of the summary from law enforcement. Are there any other questions for the law enforcement operating layer?
Anyone else?
Just going to ask if you're plugged into any, like, grant, you know, mailing lists or listservs for, you know, some of this additional, like, the marketing materials? I mean, I see those things so essential. Is there anything like that that you know of, or are you plugged into that and have service around that?
Not as easy as some of the other sort of enforcement side of the House, grant opportunities. Grant, how, we typically see our law enforcement grants, they work well when we're talking about in terms of public safety. So, events in which we're teaming up or programs in which we're teaming up with the Fire Department or a nonprofit entity. For these specific needs, we haven't seen a lot out here, but we did send, as I learned recently, one of our dispatchers to a grant-writing course.
Nice.
And so, I hope to utilize her new skills and expertise in that realm soon. So, we're on the hunt.
Okay. I'll keep an eye out as well.
Thank you. Please do.
Anything else on the law enforcement end of things? Okay, then we'll move on to Emergency Communications, which is page 71.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you'll see here, just as I mentioned, in law enforcement side of the House, most of the adjustments, but I will mention some that weren't, are included in the salary and benefits. I think they were, Mark, are they not? There's some? Am I looking at the right page? Yes, they are. Okay. The biggest increase you'll see, well, let me start by saying this. I thank the Mayor, thank our Finance Director, in continuing to support professional development. This was something that I potentially had to make a significant cut for based on our budget constraints for our dispatchers. And the reason being is because there was a significant, in my opinion, increase in the contracted services of our Records Management Consortium, MPSIS. Those increases came about this year. We got early indication that they were coming a few months ago. They were on my radar that there would be increases to the MPSIS line item. And so, you see that that increase changed from 86,516, which was funded in 2021, to what will be needed to sustain those services of 91,926. I will say, however, that one item was included in that sort of MPSIS package. Let me go to that real quick, if you allow me a second here. And in the spirit of continuous improvement in our service to the community and evaluating me as a manager, looking at what we're doing well, what we can do better, there's a program that was offered and presented to the Commissioners of MPSIS that looked at a reporting system for the consortium. That reporting system would do a better job of tracking use-of-force incidents that are currently recorded in our record system. It would allow opportunities for what I would consider a quasi-early intervention system, where it would potentially present yellow flags to myself and the other lieutenants and supervisors, so that nothing is missed on days off, for example, or when I go on vacation, or when the lieutenants are gone. It'll flag us potentially to say, hey, this is a caution, this officer had a, although justified, a use-of-force incident a week ago, had a pursuit two days ago, you know, had another incident, you know, just yesterday, and it'll offer up a yellow flag. Doesn't mean that the officer is necessarily in trouble, but it indicates that it's worth a check-in. Again, to that wellness, again, to the making sure that we're supportive of our officers and responsible to the community and making sure that we check in on staff if they need a timeout, if they need an EAP referral, if we need to do sort of a debrief on some of the calls for service that that officer went to, that's what that program allows us to do, on top of the many other options that are available with that program. And so, that, you'll see, maybe you didn't, is an additional $2,735 increase. That product was never there before for any of our consortium agencies, and they completely sold us on that product. It's called LFTA Reporting System, L-E-F-T-A. And so, in trying to come up with a decent budget proposal for the Mayor, that left me saying, well, unfortunately, I don't have any money left in my budget. And what I presented to the Mayor and the Finance Director was a zero-dollar amount for professional development to try to make up for that difference. And so, as I heard you ask, or mentioned to Diane, I came running, Mayor, and said, and to Mark, and said, I know this was my job and task to come up with zero. I'm in the negative, and by the way, I still need professional development. And so, that's why I'm appreciative of the $1,000 that the Mayor did include in that line item. Any questions?
Anyone questions, Fu Chief? If not, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Steph, we are, way ahead here. Fire and EMS, Chief of the Home.
I'll try to be careful.
Expect nothing less.
I need to let me in this. Okay, I don't have to try to be careful.
Players, that's okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, okay. Hello, happy people. How are you all? So, I'm going to start kind of echoing a little bit of Chief Chaney Austin's comments that we kind of went through the budget and redid things a little bit this year, try and set some different goals and opportunities for our Fire EMS Department. Our three goals are leadership, teamwork, and training, because training is one of the biggest aspects for our department. So, we try and work around that. So, of all the changes on the Fire Protection side of things, all but one of them is directly related to wages and benefits, which came from the Finance Director. Line number three, which is the part-time wage line item, when I met with Public Safety and provided this budget ahead of time, that particular line item was increased from 6,500 to 21,000. As I've mentioned, over several months, we've never accounted for the OIC coverage on the POP line item, which is one of the reasons we're consistently over on that line item. And this was an attempt to address that. Since that original budget proposal, the Mayor and the City Administrator and Mark are aware of this, we ran into a little bit of a hot-button issue with our Medical Direction, which we've had for 36 years, I believe, here at the city. We can no longer continue with our current Medical Director after the end of the year. In 36 years, times have changed, as has the cost of Medical Direction. So, instead of $5,500 a year, which is what we've been paying Dr. Ellis for the, as many years as I can find records back for, we have two choices in Dane County. It's either Madison Emergency Physicians or the Consortium. If MEP is St. Mary's-based, the Consortium is UW-based. In today's world, you can't get an individual doctor that's willing to sign off on protocols that they didn't have a hand in helping to create. So, I reached out to both, reached out to MEP, reached out to the Consortium. I got a very short reply from the Consortium that they were not interested, nor did they provide services for us at this time, which I'm okay with. The Consortium starts at $50,000 a year and goes up. MEP has several agencies in Dane County. There are also Dane County's Medical Direction. They're on the State Medical Direction Board. They provided a quote of 16,800 for Medical Direction, which is a pretty good price. I'm pretty familiar with what other agencies pay, and that's pretty good. So, what I did, based on what, again, the directions that we got from the Mayor, from the City Administrator, on budget, was to try and absorb that the best we could within our existing line items. So, that $21,000 line item that you see there has actually changed. The number that I've got now is 19,360. So, it's gone down. And you asked, how did that go down if I add $17,000 into a line item? One of the things I did with the Fire EMS budgets, went through it line by line and made sure what we had was actually accurate. So, what we were setting aside in budget for our two Assistant Chief stipends didn't match what we're actually paying them. It was actually higher in budget than what we were paying them. So, we actually reduced it down to what they actually are supposed to be getting, instead of what we were budgeting them to get. So, that decreased. Instead of 6,500 per Assistant Chief, it's actually 5,000. That's what they're supposed to be getting. There's a $400 a month stipend for being Assistant Chief, and there's a clothing allowance built into that. So, the Fire Budget line item of 119 has both the Assistant Chief stipends in there, and the remainder of that is coverage for weekend OIC coverage. Okay, I said weekend twice. That's okay. It allows me to provide OIC coverage on the weekends under the POP program and not take away from the 36 hours of coverage that we have for POP time. So, the remainder of that dollar amount, which is roughly $7,000 for OIC POP time or OIC coverage, I'm going to ease with some creative staffing. So, that line item went down about $2,000. And on EMS side, I'll tell you what happened with the rest of that on the EMS side. But other than that line item, everything else, I believe, is the exact same. So, I'll finish up the Fire side before I ask if there's any questions. On the POP and the POC line items, I understand that from history, it can be a bit of a contentious topic. The POC line item, my goal is to see that over budget every year, not under budget, but over budget. The POC line item is our incentive for volunteers to respond when they're not on the clock. So, if I have a line item that's going over budget, it means I have more volunteers responding than what I factored for. So, this year, we're going to be over. We've had, we're about 210 calls over last year already on the Fire side, much less the EMS side. And we have a lot of volunteers that have been covering a lot of hours. So, that's their $15 per call that they're getting for responding. If you follow us on Facebook, you saw we had a car fire last week. We had six volunteers show up within four minutes and help us staff the truck to put a car fire out. Middle of the day, middle of the week, we're getting volunteers. At times, you don't normally get volunteers. So, that line item, I left at 37. Again, I would be more than happy to work with the Council to increase that, but I also want to be realistic and say that line item should be over every year. If it's over, it means we're doing our job with our volunteers and they're responding like we want them to. The POP line item, that one you'll see is estimated, coming up about $6,000 over. That's the OIC coverage that we don't account for. So, if we have 36 hours firefighter coverage, and I have Dan on shift overnight, which he is tonight, no, not tonight, it's his birthday tonight, he's not on shift tonight. He's on shift tomorrow night. That 15 hours of coverage from when I go home until the next morning is not accounted for in the POP budget. I have 36 hours of firefighter time, and like tomorrow night, I have 36, I have three 12-hour shifts with firefighters, and I have Dan on as the OIC that night. That 15 hours of time has never been accounted for. I went back to the entire 2017, when it was all built and all that, it was never accounted for. So, that's what I attempted to do this year. Medical Direction threw me a bit of a hurt. So, expect to see that line item need to go up. We are one of the three left in Dane County that pay by stipend. Everybody around us, from our smallest villages to other cities, are paying minimum wage, period. So, if you're on shift, you're getting minimum wage. McCarland, Oregon, Maple Bluff, Cottage Grove, Marshall, they're all paying minimum wage. So, I'm not proposing minimum wage. I'm just saying, we may have to look at that program and see how we can keep attracting people to come stay here, instead of going three miles down the road to McCarland to a brand-new public safety building and getting paid minimum wage, instead of $3 an hour to be here. So, just be aware, next year, I'm going to try to do something with that, but there'll be some change on that next year, but not this year. So.
Any questions?
I just have a comment. I don't know if Doug remembers this, but I do. Several years ago, we looked at what it would cost us to have a full-time paid Fire Department. We can't afford that, folks. So, you guys are a bargain.
And I apologize. I really meant to. This has been a really busy week. That's not an excuse, but I really meant to have a graphic up here for you so you can understand just how much we get from our volunteers for what we pay. So, from our full-time staff, we get about 19,000, 20,000 hours a year of coverage for what we pay for our full-time staff. We get the equivalent amount of coverage from volunteers, and we're paying $46,000 a year for it. So, as of the end of June, we had logged 9,000 hours of volunteer time already, and our output was $26,000. So, we get a lot from our volunteers. We do have a bunch of new ones starting that are excited to start. But again, we'll work on it through next year and come back with a proposal and see what we can do here.
Isn't both the paid-on-call and the paid-on-premise both funds volunteers, right?
Yeah. So, the paid-on-premise, and that was a subject I brought up when we met about the budget, the POP line item should actually probably be a wage line item, because we're actually paying for coverage, regardless of what we're paying. We're paying somebody to be at the station to cover our Fire Department. The paid-on-call is an incentive, so I can understand that that being a non-wage line item. But I have the same issue with, that Diane brought up about her Newbridge contract. If I increase that at all, that, because it's a non-wage line item, it completely explodes the budget percentage-wise. If I, 1% gives me $460 that I can increase that line item.
And we're making some changes in that for next year, right?
Yeah. So, we will work within the constraints of it for this year, and I'll bring back some proposals for next year.
I guess what I'm talking about is right now, they're paid on-premise, but if they've been with the department a certain amount of time, they're really not on-premise? Is that right?
No, the paid-on-premise program, thank you for reminding me. My creative staffing solution for next year, so this program has been in place for five years, the paid-on-premise program, and Chief Sullivan allows some longtime members to respond from home and still be considered paid on-premise. That ends January 1st. It's sunsetting. You have to be at station. I'm putting my own money where my mouth is. I generally pull anywhere from 24 to 48 hours here at the station, even though I have no place to sleep right now. If I'm going to ask people to do it, I do it myself. So, the other big change to that program, which will help budget-wise, is we're going to pay on seat position instead of rank. So, right now, if I have Jeremy Small and Hans Anderson and John Lockwood and Brett Hayden on the engine, they're all getting paid in POP, even though I only need one pump operator. So, if I pay for one pump operator, one officer position, and two firefighter seats, because the rates are different depending on what you are. So, the staff have all been advised of this. We've talked about it for at least the last six months, so they all know it's coming. So, those will be the two changes to the program, is there'll be no more responding from home on POP pay, and they'll be paid on seat position.
Any other questions? Alder Wood?
Just more a comment. I guess the paid-on-call and the paid-on-premise program, the only way, reason, I guess, they were controversial was because they kept going, they were way over budget, and, I mean, it was a new program, and, but there was, yeah, some budget uncertainty around them, and that was the issue. It wasn't so much the program.
And I appreciate that, and I trust me when I say I do not want budget uncertainties. I like to know exactly what I've got for budgeting. So, we're, again, we've actually managed to meter it down this year. The OIC still hasn't over-budgeted somewhat by the end of the year, but we're less over-budgeted than we were last year. And we'll address the weekend OIC coverage, which is the biggest bulk of that, under the part-time line item at this point.
Okay. Anything else?
I just wanted to comment. I always appreciate your thoroughness and you digging up numbers and things from the past and getting things sorted out, and I always appreciate your effort on that. You're definitely a details guy, and it's awesome. Thanks.
I'm enjoying it. Believe it or not, I'm actually enjoying it.
Just keep telling yourself that.
Every day. Every day is my best day. Every day, every day is my best day.
Jerry for prez. Okay, we'll move on to ambulants.
Okay.
On page one-thirty-seven.
So I'm gonna start with revenues. Um, we're actually doing well on revenues. After our meeting, Mark, I reached out to LifeQuest for them to do a projection based on the new Medicaid rates and what our current returns are. They're comfortable with the four-sixty-five, they actually came back with a higher number than that, but I'm not comfortable with that, so. Um, I'm comfortable leaving it at four-sixty-five for next year. Um, so based on, uh, current collection rates, the new Medicaid rates, and our call volume, and our current, um, transport rate dollars, they're comfortable with the four-sixty-five. I actually didn't give them that number, I said, what would you project us to do next year, and they came back at, I don't wanna say it publicly, so, uh, four-sixty-five is a comfortable number for myself for next year. Uh, based on, they're looking at it, not necessarily me going, yeah, I know we can do it. That came from them saying that four-sixty-five is doable for next year. Um, the public safety aides at thirty-one hundred dollar a month, that'll actually be higher, um, for the twenty-two budget. The new FAP funding should be coming in, they close the seventeenth of October, so we should know that number probably in the next week or so. So we will get at least double that, um, not closer to eight thousand. So everybody's getting both training and education dollars as of this year. Even though I'm like, great, we haven't been applying for that, we'll apply for it this year, and then they changed the rules, they're giving it to everybody anyway. So, uh, that number should at least double, and based on what, uh, last year's was thirty-nine hundred, I think, or thirty-nine eighty-one was the actual dollar amount. Um, the, uh, new one should be anywhere from eight thousand to eighty-five hundred for that public safety aide. I should know more by next week, uh, when they set up that number. This budget is remarkably similar to the fire budget, um, as nothing has changed. Um, I will say our equipment maintenance budget is high again this year. Uh, we started about eight thousand dollars in the hole from the ladder through brake. Um, issue that they weren't able to fix until after the first of the year. Um, going forward, I project we'll actually be under that budget amount this year. Judging by the amount of stuff we've had to fix in the last couple of years, I would hope we're under the budget, so. Um, wages and benefits were all given by the finance administrator. The line one-nineteen, the wages part-time, that sixty-four-seven-twenty number, I had a great program built to, uh, we're gonna give a raise to our LTEs this next year, because we're starting to fall behind on that Dane County-wise. Um, and that didn't really work because of the medical direction thing. So that's the other half of where medical direction's gonna get paid for. So, in this line item, historically, there's an Assistant Chief in each half. There was one on the EMS side, one on the fireside, both of them are now in fire. Uh, this line item, the total I have right now is sixty-three thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-six. That's the, um, total I've gotten out, and again, it decreased, and everybody's like, well, how did you decrease it? And I'm still paying for medical direction, so. Uh, what I did is, we had ten LTE shifts a month built in, um, for annual LTE coverage, so two-hundred-and-forty shifts, uh, I'm sorry, one-hundred-and-twenty shifts a year. Um, I went back three years and just looked at non-military deployment months, and nine shifts will actually cover that, not ten, based on vacation and, uh, sick time and holiday time. So I decreased it from ten to nine. That saved us about five thousand dollars. Um, the LTE pay increase I just removed, which saved us about thirty-five hundred dollars. And then I added back in the new medical direction cost, which, Mark, I think I sent you that cost, is sixteen thousand, eight hundred was the proposal. I had budgeted seventeen, so it fit within that, to come up with a total of sixty-three, six fifty-six. Um, I'm comfortable with that. I will say we will likely need to do an LTE pay increase next year. Um, right now, we're between two and three dollars an hour below what every other department's paying in the county. Um, we do have some good LTEs, though, that are coming and pulling a lot of hours with us, though, so. Uh, they didn't know I was planning on a pay increase, so it's not like I talked to them and then took it away from them, so. That's the only significant change that I have on the EMS line item budget.
Alderwood?
So, the medical director is gonna cost about eleven thousand, three hundred more than we have been paying. And you're splitting that between wages part-time and ambulance and wages part-time and fire?
The total cost of all the programs, I'm splitting between the two, yeah. So, the medical direction will fit underneath the EMS side.
Okay.
But then I moved, like, Chief Eckloff was under the EMS budget, I moved him over to the fire budget, uh, to kind of balance out, uh, the two line items. Um, if you like, I'm happy to put it all back into one. Um, I tried to do my best to balance the impact across both budgets.
Any other questions? It's not, thank you.
I appreciate you both.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Next up is Jill. Clerk of Elections, page thirty-four. Do you wanna take, like, a five-minute break, Carrie? Why don't we do that? Be back at, uh, seven-thirty-five.
What page are you on?
I agree, I can just stand up a little bit. The funny thing is usually when I'm at, like, a lecture or something, and just get up on the floor. Snap it, yeah. Look what's happening. Are we just taking a break? I just took the break and then came back to find.
You said no.
Oh, got it, okay.
All right, we are.
Okay, never mind, call me or send it to me.
Menopause is kind of close.
We are live. Next on the list is clerk and elections, city clerk Andrews, this is on page thirty-four.
Hi, everybody. This is my last budget, you guys, it's pretty exciting. My budget is pretty much the same every year because I don't get to buy a truck and I don't get to build a park. And so, my stuff is statutorily dictated, and so there isn't anything extra. So I followed the mayor's requirement and kind of reduced where I could, which was tight because office supplies, that line is for the entire admin wing. And professional development, I looked at because I'm assuming, I'm just, this is an assumption on my part, but I would assume that somebody we first hire would not be going to conference the very first year they start, I'm not sure if that's true. But the clerk probably will be doing some training, so I did, that's why I reduced that line. I'm not sure how it's going to be with the utility billing, clerk's job title changing, if the clerk and the deputy clerk can be gone at the same time. We can't now, okay, we can't, so, okay, I'm getting the head shake, so. So I'm assuming only one person would be going to training next year, but again, that was my assumption, so that's what I reduced that amount for. And everything else, I just pretty much looked at, what do we actually use? And let's try to be realistic, so that's where I came up with these numbers.
Just, just to be real, Joan, we did increase your budget for postage.
Uh, I see that.
To a more realistic number.
Yeah.
Because of the elections next year, four elections next year. And just in general, postage fees have just come out.
Yes, true, yep, thanks for that. Yes, there's going to be still, we have seen some reduction, well, that's in elections, but we've seen some reduction in the absentee voting, but not a great deal, because people discovered how nice it is, so. That's kind of it for the clerk's portion, really nothing.
Okay, any questions?
Nothing outstanding, okay. In elections, as Mark will explain, or has explained in the past, we keep the salaries level because they fluctuate from year to year, because every other year, there's two elections, and then the next year, there's four. So it switches back and forth, and it's just kind of confusing to change it every year, so we keep it kind of level. And everything else, like service contracts.
Could you hold on just a minute, Joan?
I'm sorry.
Nancy says we're on mute.
Uh, well, it's very probable. I can listen.
Oh.
That's mine, it has to be on mute.
There you go, how about now?
Is that okay, Nancy?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I said a lot of really great things, and it was really amazing.
Final speech.
Bye, Ed.
No. It wasn't, no. Anyway, in elections, as I said, similar, my budget is, again, not really exciting, bells and whistles, ooh, you know, it's just kind of like what we have to get done, we do, so.
It is exciting.
Well, it is.
It's an important civic duty.
Yeah, it's true, I agree with that, but it's just not, I don't get to buy anything fun. So, so that's it.
We do leave our election budget the same, as you could look at just the pattern, like eighteen, or over budget, sixteen, nineteen, or under twenty, or over. So just fluctuating, instead of fluctuating the budget number, we just keep the same every year, evens out over a two-year period.
Anyone have any questions on clerk or elections? You, Nancy, in particular, since we were all on mute. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't, because I didn't hear anything, so what was the question?
Well, I thought you might, if you were just looking at the paper.
No, no, I'm good.
All right. Okay, well, nothing else for Joan, thank you, Joan, and sorry that it's your last budget, I'm happy for you, though.
Thank you.
We will move on to finance and TIF.
So finance is on page thirty-one, there were two increases, new increases. Service contracts, so from forty-seven hundred up to seventy-five hundred, just one for the pattern, just the history. So basis is base there, a lot of, we get charged extra for using color, and so I think our color numbers for copying is up. A lot of it's due, you know, we do a lot of large printings for planning, they have a lot of documents that have to be needed in color, so, you know, so it gets charged through here, so a lot of that's through here, just our major service contract, but, you know, we do always, every month, every quarter, we are going over our copying charges for that, so that budget number has been increased, to deal with that, and I think planning department's been fairly busy in the last, for a little bit here now, so I think it's pretty, going to stay pretty solid. Other surprises, other supplies and expenses, did increase from a thousand to two thousand, and this is basically our, the one time into the year for taxes, so we have to pay for our tax bills, and we pay the county, because they have to print them, and we have to, we also have the envelope that we have to buy, and we also put in there a letter, so we put a letter in there for the community, and one that shows, you know, breaks out the portion which each districts, and some stuff about what's going on with the city, so we have to get that. So, tiny, that's all set and done, for the charge we get from Dane County, it's about two thousand between the two. That's all I have for that, any questions?
Alder Thomas.
What's going on with the service contracts, that they're going up so much?
Yeah, that's the one, service contracts are for copy machines, so that's where we're going over our usage, mainly for, we get charged actually for colored paper, and so lately, you know, we have a lot of projects, like planning department, they have all their large documents in color, some other departments have too, so that's been, it's a higher rate we get charged for that, so that's been going over with the new, with our copying machine.
Because you're over the one percent?
What's that?
You're over the what?
Yes, yes.
Not setting you very good.
Wait a minute, go back to my budget.
I was just going to ask, have you, like, looked at purchasing the printer outright versus, you're using a leasing model, is that right?
You know, we debated that.
I know, it's tough.
Probably two or three years ago when we bought that, and it was debated, you know, do you do color leasing?
Yeah.
I mean, do you buy it outright, or lease it, I think we overall, even with the increases, we're still ahead.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I think it was two years ago, we looked at lease versus own, and the numbers still didn't pencil out that ownership would have been better in the long run, unfortunately.
I think they do that intentionally.
Yeah. They did all the work, but we actually got a pretty good deal.
Okay, good.
TIPS, paid one forty-seven. So basically, the TIPS are pretty straightforward, they're all, one just go through, one paid at one forty-seven. You look at all of them, they're all basically just to the principal and interest, just to our payment schedule.
The library will tell us.
So, just so you know how this all works, if you want to keep that, bookmark that one forty-seven on the page, let's see here, page, page eight is used as calculate TIF increment. This is a formula that's given to state, the how TIF is calculated, I take Dane County, appropriate levy first come, which, and I don't have Dane County as a school district, or, or Madison College, I got a three percent sitting there for each of them, increase. This will adjust once we get the numbers from, once we get approved levy, so, TIF numbers will change, because it's a rolling number based on levy. So this is how this is all calculated, so if you go to, there's this, kind of the bottom of the page, it says equalized value per district, increment value in the two thousand two, twenty-two TIF increment, twenty-one increment, so, Julie, TIF four, which is Mill Drive TIF, is twenty-five million, twenty-five point five million dollars in increment from its base, which is wrong, so that generates currently five hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. TIF five, which I call Garden Circle, which is the MSP projects, that one is, you know, is nineteen million. TIF six, which is clinics, on the CLW, Mary Clinic, is twenty-six million, twenty-six point six million, so that's six hundred thousand increment. TIF seven, which is, this will be the last year we have had it open, and we can look to close it after this year, this is the, it's also Miller Drive, it's the Fairway Clinic TIF, if you're, that project, that's Mary Clinic, it's all paid off, can be closed anytime. TIF eight, which would be the Tracea project, it's twenty-five million, and then TIF nine, which is the credit, your front project, and that only has a partial, I think there's only a couple million dollars as part, for put in for new construction, for, you know, that last phase, all that, all that is estimated, all that will come in here then, next year for TIF nine, once it's officially on the books, so hopefully it'll end by another year, otherwise we'll have probably, you know, three fourths of the assessments. So, that's, that's just TIF, and that's all that's, that's now determined, it's just the formula driven, that'd be good. So, on page.
Mark, before you leave, you had said about TIF seven, that it's paid off, and we could close it, is there a reason, why would we want to close it, or not?
Well, it's probably going to be more of a CDA question, I think it's going to be, do you want to keep it open one more year for to collect that increment for Renew Manona? Otherwise, if there's any projects in the near future that you might want to keep it open, but I would recommend after that, you'd close it, I mean, I'd close it sooner than later.
Yeah, for example, one option that the CDA and the council can consider in the future is whether or not to extend it another year to capture one year of additional value to use for formal housing-related activities, that's how we refunded the pool of money for Renew Manona to make it, and go through this current cycle that we're in now. So that's one option that we'll evaluate and bring, bring council something to consider.
Okay, thanks.
So I can just back one forty-seven again, just, so that's just, TIF four, just to hit on, so just kind of hit on this, this is Mill Drive, it should be paid off, probably six years.
About six years left.
And then TIF will be paid off. TIF five, again, is the MSP, if you notice in TIF five, there's a transfer from TIF, four sixty-eight thousand, so this is, I'll make up TIF number six, so this is one of our donor districts. TIF five, I don't know if you're aware of, was, Garden Circles were a bunch of apartments that had to be tore down and rebuilt, so this is, for a, for a city like Manona, like the Manona community, these are, these TIFs are hard to recoup, they take longer to recoup, just because, you know, you're tearing down and rebuilding, there's a longer timeframe for those, and just more added cost than a, than a field where you can just build right away. So that is getting money from TIF, TIF six, on the very next page is, TIF six, again, that's UW Meritor, as you can see, there's a, there is a transfer to TIF, four sixty-nine thousand there, so that gets transferred over there. This is one of those too, where we didn't have to buy the properties, we had to buy it, there we had a developer there, used to be storage units, so this is, you know, this is like a lot of communities, they have these TIFs, they can pay it off right away, you don't have to worry about the redevelopment part, so, this is a very successful TIF, that's why it's a donor district, is TIF six. TIF seven is another very successful TIF, then paid off, which is the Fairway Clinic. As you can see, there, the expenditures, this is principal and interest, that shows zero, but they have a developers' agreement, they have to generate so much increment to pay off for development agreements, and that's paid off this year. TIF eight, on one forty-nine, again, that's Tracea, that is a very successful TIF, and that is another donor district, is TIF nine. Again, we didn't have to do anything, they, basically a mobile home park, that was cleared by us, and so, the developer was able to come in, clear land, and just build on that, so, you know, these are very successful TIFs, so it's also successful, we're able to donate to TIF nine, which is, TIF nine, which you see, is the riverfront TIF. Anybody has questions on the TIFs?
Aldo, go first.
Yeah, I was going to ask, with the UW Meritor TIF, so TIF six, is UW tax exempt? I don't think they pay property taxes.
Meritor.
Meritor does, but UW, how?
They pay.
They do?
Yeah, they do.
Okay, thanks.
So they have a developers' agreement with us, so they have these developers' agreements, they have to generate so much increment for tax, they have to make so much taxes, they pay that agreement to us.
Okay.
So their names, if you ever look on the assessment, it doesn't say UW, it's the Howard Clinic.
Okay, sure.
So they're on there.
Okay, thanks.
But there was an argument that UW, the Health, UW Health Foundation, I think, had made it in the past.
Got it.
But it didn't fly, yeah.
Yeah, I remember when they first negotiated, there was that, there was an issue about them.
Right.
Otherwise, if they weren't tax exempt, they would have done.
Right, yeah, and I was, I had heard an issue with Madison, where they felt that they shouldn't have gotten TIF, I was wondering if that applied to us.
No, they paid.
Okay, thanks.
That's all I have for TIFs.
Anyone, Alder Thomas, did you have something?
No.
The last one is the general fund revenues, a lot of the kind of, kind of brought up in the presentation, but, page sixteen, I'll just kind of go back over those again, other taxes, other tax, other, other than property tax, the first line, personal property tax, as you can see, it went from seventy-seven hundred to thirty-seven hundred, thirty-seven thousand, that's basically money, you just go to TIF two, and now it's, the city goes to the general portion. General government revenues, expenditure restraint, as you see, a hundred twenty-seven thousand, and highlight transportation aids, only went up about four thousand dollars, but as you can see, this number kind of fluctuates, two thousand eighteen, we were at seven hundred fifty-three thousand, then went down to six hundred seventy-eight, and then six fifty-three, and we went back up last year, and we stayed bottom, so that's directly related to spending on capital projects. A lot of those big numbers from the seven fifty, two thousand eighteen, I think was the end of Mill Drive, there was a lot of dollars spent on Mill Drive. License and permits, liquors and malt beverage licenses, this one highlights us, it did move down about three thousand dollars, because, as you can see, twenty, twenty-one, we're not reaching the twenty-four thousand, we also, I think we believe it's three unused licenses.
Four.
Four?
Mm-hmm.
So, until we get those licenses filled, we won't reach, four, twenty-four thousand's basically our max, so I did break that, reduce it down to twenty-one thousand. Other businesses and occupation licenses, we're going to increase it to five thousand, a lot of these are increases before, like, music events, and ZF devices, they had a lot of calls lately.
Oh, gosh.
So that's, you know, I assume that's going to keep on continuing. Doning permits, we did decrease that a little bit, just based on history. Funds and forfeiture, and court penalties, this is where we did make some adjustments. We did increase it from a hundred seventy-six thousand down to a hundred sixty thousand. We're expecting about a hundred forty thousand this year, they are starting to write a little bit more tickets, so I think, expecting to go up a little bit more, to a hundred sixty, but you can see during COVID, we're down to a hundred twenty-five, and we were averaging right around a hundred seventy-six thousand in eighteen and nineteen before COVID, and that was actually increasing. So hopefully, that's a future one, could go up or down. Oh, they also want this parking, parking violations, that's kind of dramatically fell off, you know, two thousand twenty, because of COVID, down, you know, six thousand, and this year, we're probably going to be right around seven thousand, so I did adjust that number, not to be realistic.
Mark, can I ask a question about the cigarette licenses?
Sure.
Is there a limit to the number of those that we distribute, do we have to grant?
I'll answer your answer.
There's no limit on those, there's no quota at all on any license, except for liquor, hard liquor, and then, and we don't limit them, new businesses are gone through, you know, review process.
Do they apply, do they go through the LRC, or?
They go through the planner to start, if it's a new business, that's just a tobacco store.
Okay.
We only have a couple in Manona, and, but, but the sellers of tobacco are generally the grocery stores and gas stations, along with their liquor products.
Do we ever, I mean, pie in the sky, but I think maybe that's something that I would love to think about in the future, about diminishing the amount of tobacco that we sell in our city, and just being more proactively anti-tobacco, and vaping, and smoking, we've had a long discussion about it at parks earlier this week, and it's just sort of been on my mind, so, thanks for your time to answer those questions.
Oh, charges for services, fire protection fees, it did reduce based on, we did increase it last year, a little over ten thousand, we're probably going to, on record, on pace to be right around seven thousand, so I did, did increase it, decrease it to nine thousand, you know, Jerry still thinks we can get probably to nine thousand, so I did drop it down a little bit with that. Park shelter rentals, did increase it from twenty-one thousand to twenty-five, just based on Jake's approved fee increases from the park board, so that's part of it, that's the reason for that increase of the four thousand. And then miscellaneous revenues did decrease from a hundred thirty-five thousand, for interest income, went from a hundred thirty-five thousand to a hundred thousand, hopefully the rates will eventually kind of go up again, as you can see in two thousand nineteen, we're at four hundred sixty-six thousand in interest, and now we're down to, I estimate around seventy-five this year. And then transfer from other funds, so transfers from other funds, is basically what we charge other funds for, like, say, transfer other funds for a library, is to do the accounting, pay the insurance, they don't have, if you look at their, so they don't have any charges for the, you know, payroll, we use a payroll, we do the accounting, how we pay the insurance, so things like that, that's what these are, you know, if you look at water, sewer utilities, there's a lot of rentals and stuff like that, we charge them for that, so, that's a lot of those, that's what those transfers are, there is a reason behind those, basically another charge for services that the general provides. And fund balance applied, last year we used two hundred fifty thousand to offset debt, now we use a hundred twenty-five thousand for that, so that's all they have for revenues.
Questions, anyone? Aldo, more.
Mark, can you explain the difference going from around twenty thousand, you know, on the transfer from the ambulance, down to two thousand?
Oh, that's a mistake, that's showing me two, thanks for catching that. Thanks for catching that.
Anything else? Okay, well, that's, so that wraps up everything we have for tonight.
Yes.
Our next meeting is a week from tonight, also, I assume at 5:00.
30.
Or 5:30, I'm sorry. And we'll be getting out that agenda really next week, I'm sure. Is there anything else, Brian, that we need to know? Obviously tomorrow night is the South Line Qua meeting here in this room, also available via Zoom. So if nobody has anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Please adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
This room, Ms. Wong.
Thanks, everybody.